Our Father, we are grateful to be able to gather here in season more to take care of the business. To take care, we may reach one of these commissioners and the work that they do. Lord, I pray that you would just give them wisdom to use the knowledge that they have that we may make right decisions for the people of Taylor County. Ask, Lord, that you would bless and help things to be done here deeply and in order to certainly ask your blessed people all to take place. Lord, we ask it for your name's sake and for Christ's sake. We ask it in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We're happy to have you here. We've had a great time in Taylor County, become a regular member of the council, and we'd like to declare the great unity of the community. Welcome to the community. Before we get started, I want to go over a few of our rules. I'll follow up if anyone wants to speak, if you have something you want to say or something you want to add, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you on the log or something. And then I'll try to go by who raised their hand first. And you come to the podium and you say your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. Try to say everything you've got to say in three minutes because what we have outside is that we want you to come to this podium at one time. And we want everybody that wants to speak to have their own thing. Okay, if you have a cell phone with you, your hands, your phone, your cell phones at this time. And if you want to speak about something that's not on the agenda this evening, later on, and you will have an opportunity for the end of the meeting. We have times where you can come forward and use three or four minutes. And if you cannot go on any things during that time, but if you're talking to people, you need some time, or you need to go, then you're welcome to add your issue to the side of the agenda and bring it back and you'll be given more time. With that said, we will move to number three of the agenda. And I've been asked so far to remove item number eighteen from the entry status. And to remove item number eighteen, the board can consider a proposal to begin with on our board's twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, following the received charges for services better as presented by Mark Allen, general manager. And also, I've been asked to remove item number six, so that it can be added to our public hearing. And number six, the board's part of a public hearing that we've had a sixty can't be and we're assuming they're after a proposal on that proposal. So that the public's free to remain, so it would figure out what most of everyone in this room will let me be helped. And that will come back later today. Are there any more additions, please, or anything else to mention?
I'm over the center of the podium, thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner O'Pace, the second officer, commissioner, moving any further discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion hearing. This is a public hearing, number four. The board can receive this for the elevation and construction associated with the elevation of five homes for the hazard mitigation program, that's HMT, that for this day at six p.m. are assumed they're after a proposal. And I want to say that actually, we have four, not five, due to real progress couldn't look through. So that leaves four, and they're Percolate at Sixth Street, Worthy, In Happy, Early Wetstone, Twelve Club Avenue, South East In Happy, John Morris, two twenty-one tenth, Palmer Road, Terry, Charlotte Park, twenty-one five forty-six, Harris Road, Terry. And I think at this time that it would be called a first of the pair if we're related or not, any of these people.
Not related, any of them. Not related, any of them.
Oh, and I'm not related. That's true. And you know, we live in your data. We only have one data, and it's to be blanked out, home school, here in Terry. We have two all bloods, and I'm sure as they separate, it's a cloud in the car, it's one year, but we don't have a gift. Okay, the first one that I open is on John Morris, same top of the road. That does leave it. It's sixty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety. Okay, the next bid is on Charlotte Clark, on Harrow Road. That does bid with fifty-one thousand thirty-five dollars, seventy. And that family being there, so you have to draw this one here.
We have that, we love it. I am. We go ahead and tell these two.
Well, we all.
Maybe they've got everything locked in here for you. Well, we all, we all get the bidding, so.
Is this city, quality house? They're mostly, and it's the answer. So these two bids will go to the district committee, and they'll look to see if everything is there received, and then come back at another meeting, perhaps the next meeting, to make their recognition. And here, the other two that were not bid on, and that was Percolate and Urban Wetstone, we will put those out for this, and we'll invite someone else to. Item number five. The board can receive this for the meeting of two hundred and ninety-six plus acres, and a public key, called Metal Berry, at State of Twenty Four, that for this day at six o'clock a.m. are assumed they're after a proposal. Okay, as you can see from the list, we only got one bid on that, Florida Brown Public Key, and eleven three from Montana Forest. We have that, our mission to the video that plans that's on our third new property, that we can have. And there we just is sixty-six land prime, for the title of two hundred and ninety-six acres. Okay, and the district committee, myself, Clay Olson, and David Ryan. And they all will come back with a recognition that we have to give them too. Number six was for those who are in this. We will go to number seven, the board on a public hearing, that for this day at six o'clock a.m. is going to be a public hearing, and come back. Come back in number seven, we'll go to a court of recrimination, number eight. The board can consider adoption of confirmation on a little devil A and E church's fifty year anniversary, as represented by Mark Hughes Junior. Is there a motion to be confirmation in its entirety?
I approve.
And we have a motion by Commissioner O'Pace, the second officer, commissioner, moving any further discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Well, ladies, honoring little devil A and E church on its fifty year anniversary. Whereas little devil A and E church, who is its fifty year anniversary on August the twelfth, two thousand and eight. Whereas little devil A and E was a partner with a local corporation, called Project Longset, a training program to increase the number of women and other minorities in the technical field, such as electrical, instrumentation, electronics, and whereas Nate Menzel wrote the first youth department, he helped to introduce the leadership early to church pastors. And whereas one of the young people constantly looked at little devil A and E church as a native hospital, who has been ninety seven years, comes back here training for assistance in military affairs. Whereas three current members, fifty former members that reside in Taylor County School District, and whereas current and former members that serve law enforcement, and one current member is a sports and university administrator, and whereas current and former members that participated in combat operations, community service, and whereas current and former members have retired from the United States, and company and support members are supported by Georgia Public and other programs. And whereas three current and one former member stands for public office, the assets therefore be as we saw, and by the board of county committees, the county board, the state of August, two thousand and eight, that we give our honor of little devil A and E church on its fifty year anniversary, and recognize the unique impact of church.
There is one queue from little devil A and E church in the middle of the street. If not, is there a motion for proof of confirmation?
Of the proof of confirmation, honoring little devil A and E church. Say.
And we have a motion by Commissioner O'Pace, the second officer, commissioner, moving any further discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion hearing. And set item number nine with sixteen, is there a motion to approve?
I approve, come on.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Pace, the second officer, commissioner, moving any further discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion hearing. And public respect, you're on now, and at this time, I think it's safe to go back to item number seven. The board on a public hearing, that for this day at six fifteen p.m. are assumed they're after a proposal, to receive input on using tourism development funds for the installation of street lights on Keaton Beach Drive, the Keaton Beach Road Grant, and the Keaton Beach Cultural Park, and to determine if Keaton Beach residents are in favor of said light. At this time, that would be hundred, twenty, thirty, twenty years.
That's not true. Um, soon after I was wanting to build Fisher Ruffel, that would be on the roadside, in Keaton Beach. And other than me, Fisher Ruffel, I just tried to go out here to find some way to fund lighting at Keaton Beach. He has obviously received input from global listeners. To me, it's saying, oh, I feel legitimate possibility. At that point, I am about to reach out to Tripp County, Tripp County, a larger property, a electrical utility company down there. We've got a preliminary cause. We, I believe, have been by funding source from tourism development tax money. Since then, we have public hearings and other for the end of time, for the influence they have. We also have Tripp County, a representative, who, that after any kind of question, some of the influence that I have, I have more input on this, I think it's not so. And the program on the Jewish cause, you know, the culture of my life, and the Jewish glory, lowest of mine, keeping it on the top. So, I guess, I guess, I, um, I.
Is this how I see regularly all these projects within your pattern?
Well, I surveyed the purpose, there are eight purposes, talked to all of them, starting down with the, since that's the inside, well, we have, there are eight of them that, that's driven, talked to seven of them, so all of them, they're, they're stuck. One thing to remember, he is at the point of the Hudders Park, and there's already lining there at Hudders Park, which, um, has been, um, a couple of years. Have, you know, I did help the people that were part timers, the top of the, 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 that were from the back, the women's riders, the other areas. I haven't, you know, the, the negative, the negative concern, there have been some, and, uh, the turtles, and, and, uh, been labeled, uh, too much lighting, so, uh, that's what I'm trying to.
Well, is this on the other public hearing? So, if you're here and you want to speak about this, you can come play a hand, and already found you, come to play, and then you can speak for freedom.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Hudders Park is in Keaton Beach. I've lived here my whole life. I was very much favored by the Keaton Beach, and whenever I was there, a lot of Hudders Parkers, they were all favored riding the way around. They don't ride these two ends around, uh, in the dark, uh, riding down the street. Uh, they were all favored, uh, just like myself, we all could ride from around, but that's my point of view, that's just riding the street, we come in, that's tourism, promoting our vision. But when you come to see us tonight, from eight, so like that, you ride the street, you're on track, and that's just a short ride, and a few times, a couple of days.
Anyone else?
That's my nice house with, uh, I'm old, I'm, I do live down on my, but it's, it's, I'm here, I'm in town, it's very, I all, all fault, I'm taking stuff. I'll read it to them. Um, how long you been driving, or when I was on the, you were on my house, I was driving, I had to go through, uh, back, so we came down, and they were, it was, it's been back over and down, on the, on the road. Uh, I had a set of, uh, where we killed a truck, so, uh, it's low down, layer equipment, we use, and I've had this, um, and then we have, uh, several, uh, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to. Also, I'm, uh, I'm concerned, like, with my insurance, and I'm, um, it's a good thing to know that you have the coverage, and I'm sure that situation, uh, counting on us out there. As a core of our residents, uh, we can start with these, uh, we can start coming out, right, because it's all wrong, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of cars, uh, reporting gas, having the, that, that makes. So, I think I'm very proud, I'm happy, I'm free now.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's on our residence, please?
Oh, listen, very much, uh, I'm in favor of street lights, always, kept service. At Hudders Park, there are two blocks always there that are, that are worth, there are two street lights there by the bathrooms, and one at the center of the house. There's one more, I mean, two blocks, whole, that is next to the playground, and that is always something that lots of three holes up there, make the house. Um, I do all the lots of my house. But there's two that need to ramp, and I think there'll be a couple more, because the ramp and the Hudders Park is close, and there's no need to have people now alive there. Because conservatives, just enough, a lot of horse, and, and, and there, but y'all, we've lined it up, where it's blocked, they like. But, uh, street light only, not street lights, not just, uh, shut it straight down, and do not let people charge the block.
Thank you.
Sure. Can you offer a call?
You want it?
Do I have any personal remarks to make on Peter Island? Yes, I'm all about that, but baby, from Peter Island, we need to be in that, we don't have near to our, but how we think to, 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 number one, number two. We're being a bunch of fights here, and we're having to uphold, act, on help on the chairs before, should we not calm down and cable this for a little while, and address the fact that, that would be my recommendation, for all of you. Um, it's saying that the corners, there's coming out more, maybe about even, would that be saying that the, the bet tag? Yeah. That's something else that people need to consider, is safe zones, and provide, learn to keep your nails down, that we, that's known, no firmies, that's not a terror. You want to force device, or you want to, you see an ambulance, and they're, and I know you call, but they know their trouble. They have come always to town down there, a lady I'm on board. And we need to do it with down lines, on, on, doesn't, why can't it stand that it's one particular area? And if we do like that one off, then we would have to like up Peter Island, Dark Island, Keaton Beach, all one of them, if you want to know, that's, that's.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, sir, I'll make a quick text, okay? Come on, you're over here.
I'm ready to have talk, I'll, I'll, I'm ready to, but, um, this is supposed to be not, it's a, it's a, pretty, I think, I can out, in, we've been, we went to, um, Tripp County last year, they were public, they, 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 working all the lives, it's been about a few years already. It's not something that we decided to, probably, was trying to, you know, like, that's not what we want here. There's a lot of effort, it's, 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 just for the safety of all, it's one big issue. I know we got some people, uh, hurt turtles, and all, and, uh, on those, and, 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 uh, so, 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 anyway, um, this is a thing we have to think about here, we have to buy it, but, you know. There is money, and we all get on, there's, why can't we do that? um, which is things we have to think about here, we have to buy it, uh, there is money, we all get on, there's like, uh, but we have to think of, uh, you go make, you can get, uh, the, the, the pot, you get, look forward to that, still, we can, then we make together, we spend that money real quick, like, you know, if you're, if you're doing, we might as well just, uh, let, uh, one thing, it's gonna go away, I think so, it's like so far, so this, uh, so, these kids, the players, this, um, for the, uh, we got the information, we're telling them, uh, so, uh, I think something we can do, the enhance, uh, we lost our restaurant, we lost our marina, we only come to take care of the kids, we talked about, to make a diet, these lines, uh, we're going to fight that now. We need to, area, if you do not pack, or, in, something that we can push that, take it out to, uh, for, thank y'all very much. You ready?
I'll take this, yeah, I'll take this.
My name is Cheryl Taylor, I'm with the county attorney, uh, um, last year, uh, speaking to the board, uh, voting in favor of, uh, I'm supposed to speak up for the county attorney. The personal counsel, we're voting in favor of supporting first and five pieces, uh, of course, uh, did y'all hear something? No, I didn't hear anything, I'll go to that, work until the next. I went to first, about ten times. Obviously, I'm a state house, so, uh, uh, speaking out, the first of all, council voted to support funding for lighting, uh, this year. Um, and, I think those are good, uh, we can figure out where exactly it might come from, but the CDC board was in favor of this. As far as, um, law enforcement, I know that when the statute changed, changed in two thousand six, that was primarily for counties that had large amounts of people, like during spring break, and they had to hire, like, thousands of additional law enforcement personnel to cover the influx of law enforcement during spring break. And that's what that was designed for, not for, uh, counties, not, uh, not in favor of digital law enforcement. But it's coming from four thousand dollars is probably not where it should come from, but we are in support of, uh, like, for safety reasons, for communication, um, to attract more for it, uh, and.
Thank you.
My friend, when I'm paying a jury, I'm sure again, for help, we have, uh, some, uh, have, uh, water needs about, uh, things about, will they not be a war? Uh, that's a great, uh, this young lady here, so, I'm sure there's three lighting, but should he come, surely, I'm sure what he has light is gonna do, increase tourism. Again, like the woman said, no rest of office, they don't come over here, there's programs, there's two points to get there. I have a light at my, that I pay for my own security, for that, for my own security. Big Hattie School, got one light here in front, our program, again, there's one light, I'm sure, at the ramp, I like to tell, uh, that, uh, that regard, like, slow construction, or, far, still market, been pulling off, so, again, if, if I were here doing anything, there was that much concern for the lighting. There are lights going down through there, and the vehicles have to go on, order up here. All right, so that's, we need, my, when you get the light, they enter the park, and are in place. I think we're over the, uh, of the tourist, uh, in Hattie, tourist, uh, okay, my friend, uh, I've talked a lot to anybody, you, you say a lot.
I'm Cheryl Whitey, I'm from Beatty, and my opinion is that, yes, the rest of the state would very much appreciate the light. Yes, there's a policy in crime, all of the counties, we have women, we have disabled people in Beatty who are unable to afford security lighting for their homes. If we're gonna light up nine dollar homes, uh, in one area, I think that there should be equal consideration given to those people in Beatty and other areas of the county. We don't take care of one group of civilians unless we're in a position to take care of everybody. Because, to say to my knowledge, we're all being attacked, we're all, whether we're part of what we make, or a movie, or whether we're just moving pictures, we deserve to make security, to make services, you know, why? I think it does not speak well that we're preaching a wheel to squeak it, when in fact we need to keep all the wheels rolling. If people need security for their homes, that reason, because the people, again, ours, we need to be, we think that we just have security lights, buy our own security lights, we install them or have them installed by the electric company and they pay a monthly service. That's the nature of the policy there, and we're not approaching everything and anything that this committee does, we're the manager of policy, and we've already lost it. I oppose the lighting in one area, I think the recommendation we heard earlier about that we put everybody on the list and do a lottery or whatever, there has to be some way that these widows that are afraid to go out of their house because it's too dark, that's why them are, they're tired and they're afraid. People who are part timers, people who are looking at tourist dollars, I would have to guess that there's a lot of tourism in Beatty, generally, I would say. And if we're gonna light up with that being the reason that we're doing it, then, where does that priority still go?
Thank you. My name is Cheryl. My name is Cheryl, please. Okay, um, are you the trial?
Thank you, ma'am, commissioner, thank you, Mr. Bradley, for inviting us to this meeting tonight, we'd love to dive on this topic, or, uh, let us do we, discuss this a lot. First of all, I'd like to commend the Lord's commissioners for having the public hearing, because some of the worst steps, missteps, in terms of moving forward with lighting projects you've made, is not written in names for those who are impacted. So, kudos to you all for at least having the public hearing, so that all of the opinions, or the majority of the opinions, could be that. There are a couple of comments that were raised by someone, I'm gonna touch upon them quickly, uh, there are a wide range of lighting options, there is low lighting options, and some really bright lighting options. We selected lots that matches roadway lighting, which is like a wood candle, which doesn't really have, uh, uh, room. But there are dark skies combined lighting, which focuses the light straight to the ground, and it removes a lot of the light threat that, that was stifling, so we do have some options of using dark skies with lighting. For some of the lighting that was mentioned, where the light was malfunctioning, or not working at all, there is a simple reporting process. Each hole has a unique number assigned to it, it's just a matter of calling eight hundred number, hole number, one, two, three, four, five, six, it's out, and we will respond to that each time. Typically, don't light the countryside, night shadow, or, like, but if we encounter one, we, we, we'll report. And then just for the, the follow up on the cost associated with the light, there is a significant upfront cost, and then there is a monthly cost. But once the lights go in, consider it as a financial consideration, it is a financial consideration that we have a special, uh, that doesn't go in one time, uh, those are the five points that I have based on some of the people's member feedbacks on the, uh.
Thank you, my friend, um, so, if you, uh, do you have a number, uh, for the light in the hospital?
Yes, uh, we look at providing roadway lighting initially, with our first design, that needs the DOT requirement, that's the, like, eight foot candle. That light fixture runs about two hundred dollars per light, it requires a channel lever arm, so that's the cost, total cost, about three hundred dollars. And that's just the cost of the light, the labor associated with it is about a hundred dollars per fixture.
So that, that's like, so about four hundred dollars?
That's, that's not an existing pole, that's not an existing pole, if this is a new pole, or a new old pole, you have to add something, I don't know.
Now, the light fixture problem now, uh, which is from, you just promise, of a light, it goes straight down.
Yes, it does.
So, does that light, is it a lot of stuff that, that provides security, you can see, if somebody that has normal, uh, trauma, or if you get at night, you get, it illuminates enough to make it secure?
I'm, I'm, I'm giving you a little blaster, it, it depends. Because we all perceive light differently, but, yes, I would say that it provides enough light for general, uh, a solid, wide light now.
Okay, now, you have a question that I have. I heard someone talking about, uh, some people, low income, that can go towards a monthly fee to have a light, what is the monthly fee when you have a light installed at your home? How much is?
Four, about eleven dollars, four cents.
Eleven, what are you on? Okay. Do you all have a provision, uh, somewhere, a low end, some people, some, uh, well, anybody that's, that you, uh, give them a subsidy on?
No.
Is that something that's ever been discussed?
It's never been discussed.
Is that something that should be going to be discussed?
Yeah, I, 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 I feel like it's, it's, but, we just have to be careful about the stuff that I've watched out of members, that's why I'm, uh, because it's all coming out of many parts.
I know, I know, I make a warm, uh, uh, change, walking along, uh, uh, so, um, I'm sure that there's someone out there that every dollar, maybe, to be, say, um, whatever you could do, and, uh, so, we're thinking.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, 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 you hear, uh, the terms about street lights, tree lights, uh, the house, the deer die, uh, and it's something they for eyes, you know, they want to work, these are more, uh, centered for, uh, street, and, uh, effects, the neighbors, uh, the neighbors' house, that, that.
That's left, but the design of the light, it does protect forward and sideways, but depending on the location of the hole, it conceivably can encroach on the neighbor's, uh, that would be part of the light, the threat, or, like, the threat. Now, the other, this is a term that we just have to be careful with, is that the dark, dark skies combined lighting, so it focuses the lighting directly on the ground. But it does have an opportunity to provide a shield behind the lighting, like, there is a, a shield that can be installed, but there isn't a shield that can be installed, uh, it does offer an opportunity for partial, partial, uh, shield.
There's all that, uh, for, for, uh, your, uh, five year requirement?
Yes, because based on, we have looked at different options in terms of upfront costs, so the higher the upfront cost, then we would consider having a lower term on the grid, the lower the upfront cost, then the, the, uh, we, uh, we have to have some insurance that, uh, regularly, uh, follows, uh, the light, uh.
When I thought, okay, uh, I asked your, just for your engineer's recommendation on French devotion, and the, uh, park, devotion for, not devotion for. Uh, and I believe they came back with five, and four, sort of, who is serving you, uh?
Yes, it's a matter of what areas are most important, certain street lights, so, uh, because it is really, it's a matter of how much light that you want, and then they love, and they will get that for what.
And, lastly, the light at Hocke Park, that, that's, that's coming out, uh, two, try the other lights there, or, the other lights were installed, uh, as part of the, uh, grant, or the park, um, upgrades and, and so forth, uh, we see, uh, I think.
Is that, is that the, uh?
First, right, we had that light, so those were installed, uh, they, uh, they, they're, they're, yeah.
Certain, open to, threshold setting of light, because my, uh, my, uh, Bob, Bill.
Did you got, or, uh, you, you got, plenty of electricity, uh?
Yeah, not necessarily.
Please, uh, I'll, I'll correct my question to you, Carol, then, if you did all of that thing, drive, make, the marina drive? Cut off, uh, these, these, uh, are, how many, how many lots do you talk about? Zero, twenty four, and.
That's, uh, done more, more than, that might be.
Well, twenty four, and, uh, my fault was initially, especially, uh, skip every other one, and, uh, uh, yeah, uh.
And then we need about, uh, uh, then, I like, Hocke Park?
Uh, Hocke, so that's, that's.
That's Hocke Park?
Yes, uh, it is three there.
And so, you had to, uh, strike out, my stuff, figure, we're looking at.
Well.
I mean, I'll put you on the clock.
Yes.
See, and that number that moves around, uh.
Yes, they, I mean, they, uh, any, that's, are all T C, uh, and that, I don't know, so, so, it's, it's, uh, I don't have, uh, I don't have, uh, beautiful, uh, uh.
Take, so, where I'm at, uh, there, might be pretty true, you don't, I think, we'll give them a finisher, we light up the go round area, and, uh, once we repair the light, then Hocke Park, or, those don't, work, then truck out of there, and make it below, turn off foot. And if somebody says, if you want a light in your yard, six, five, nine, they get one, seven dollars for it, you know? So, that's kinda where I'm at, it's not, you know, just begging to ask. I can answer that, uh, about what to do if you afford seven dollars for it, from a plant. You'll get one. I, I've been working this year, year, and it's tough, uh, he's, uh, going ninety eight, uh, but there, there, I didn't do it well, that's, uh, that's, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's where I am. It takes, I'll, if that light fall, once you found that contract, should I light, and it's like, ten years old contract, oh, well, we have a day before, when, I'm okay, the monthly price? Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, too, though, because this energy is so long, I think it's ten on this energy, uh, right, I think, why, try, uh, uh, so, uh, we're, you know, on the light, uh, one month, turn on, name, so, it's all, money, that's a lot.
I, well, that might, there's, uh, uh, hold on, my, uh, I'll, I'll, if anybody, what is, is, say something, I, I need to recognize, if, uh, come to the twenty, my fifth week, we have one, uh, that is, uh, a very brief statement, and, uh, just from being here all night, I would come back, uh, but if you come up here, everybody can hear you, and, uh, come, uh, to the, to the, so, uh, everybody, hold on, if you want to come to the, I'll tell you, and, and ask you questions, come up here, inspect your neighbors.
I'll ask you that.
Do you know where you're going?
Get there for a resident, Tri-County, and they good up, security lights, and they're all, into a minimum.
Uh, you have some house, uh, near T, on your, on your, on your, uh.
My feeling is, I know, when I had worked on houses down in the beach, I had trouble going out there, I paid for my own light, my own security light, in front of my house, and I paid my, uh, fee, and I paid it, and it's a thought, it's a thought, you know? I feel like it's, uh, like, they just, same age, a lot of people down there, can't afford a light, and, uh, I feel like, uh, every person in the border, be at T, B, can't afford, let them all have a, uh, security light in their yard, they're gonna wanna, they don't wanna leave it out, you know, and go, on leave, go and buy your own security light, put it up, I did that, it was, uh, like, so, uh, I paid the less, feel, so, like, everybody else. I mean, you're, uh, like, like, same age, if you do it for one, you pretty much gotta do it for all. And I love a lot of all the same age, I love a lot of dark hours, and cigarettes, and, 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 uh, time, and, uh, but, it's just, it's kicking you with the, the fence up front, too. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, the boat around me, uh, the boat around me, so, I, 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 you know, that's, that's why I'm, uh, uh.
Um, you're giving me off, you know, after, uh, you had, uh, people have missed it out, uh, long life, uh, and, and I've been, uh, saying, uh, the, the, seven halls, uh, uh, well, let's say, eight, or, uh, three of them have done so, uh, you could say, uh, you have a lot of, uh, uh, the other point to consider, uh, before, is, uh, and the reason to go up the roof, uh, that's the only way to step on it, it's right, true, without using that money, is, and not having, having, that, uh, to, look, when you go down, saying, that, uh, to, be in the light here, and, and then going, you know, a hundred yards, and another one, so, yeah, you know, I, I, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's called justification, to me, it's not justification, to me, it's just, having a, 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 uh, 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 uh.
Well, you, 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 it was, that, that money, you don't pay the life bill every morning, or was, yeah, you don't have to pay it, that, that was paid each morning?
That's, uh, right, if you need the fourth and fifth, operations, budget, but, you know, I'll say that, but, next to the budget, that money is placed for other areas, so, I, I don't know, I mean, we usually budget all of it, um.
Yes, it, what is the fourth, uh, uh, now?
Uh, uh, some of our parks, um, operations, and some of our parks, um, are full complex, all of our parks, different operations, for capital halls, um, some of our, our, areas that are tourist related, we're not sure, uh, yes, uh.
I mean, um, so, is, is, uh, my, perhaps, the, 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 and the parks, the southern parks, and, uh, maybe, Tom, so, you know, we should not come back and, uh, the light, other than, uh, how are you feeling about that?
Well, I, I, I'm forgiving, it's, I mean, I've heard it already, with the, the, uh, park, we've already talked about that, that is a, that is an area where, you know, every night, uh, in all that dark, people were just getting off the ward, you know, safety issue, and, yes, the park is closed, dark, and people are still loading their boats, and, uh, causing all those, uh, and you were shut off, and, uh, could have, you know, that was, that was an issue, and then, across the street, so, the Hocke Park, then, across the street, where there are some lights, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, a. are, are some lights, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, a place for deputies to write their reports, or the ambulance, uh, and the lifeline coming out, and those kind of issues, so, um, absolutely, you know, happy for Charles there, and, you know, we should go to later, you know, uh, um, I...
I, I, I'm, I'm...
Public here, so, you heard, you heard a little public here.
Take along those lines, um, and I would love, perhaps, like, three lights, you know, I own property there, but, um, considering our recent meeting, concerning the budget, uh, of course, if it does come out, then that's, that's what impact, what mixture, and... Well, can I clarify now, for the installation of the light, if you are, um, discussing three lights at the park, they'd be twenty-five, excuse me, at two seventy-five each, that would be eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, and then four lights and holes at the boat ramp, that'd be two seventy-five each, that would be, um, close to fifty thousand dollars for the installation, and that would come out of our third, then, temperature structure fund. And then, the operation of the light would come out of the fourth and fifth, that's fine.
That's it.
Yeah, I hear a couple of things, there's only one light, and we think that you go with, if we did four or more, and...
And at the school, we also...
What, what to do?
Yeah.
Then sit down, sit down?
No, I have no problem. Just stand up.
If S F school is one of them, there may be one around the back, or, uh, E M D, or, uh, angles, five, four cars, that's your, uh, drive back there, so, we had, really old last year, all, and, and like I said, at the parking area for auxiliary boxes for both, we have not that, also, after, uh, faith road, but there's one light there that belongs to a gentleman who lives on this road here, and illuminates it back to, to like, uh, that's your own life in that area, and, yeah, I, I would count, you know, like if I was, uh, they're closed, and, uh, everybody's got a cell phone, and they're probably gonna find a light.
Uh, can I, is there a light that, is there a light that do that?
I'm sorry?
Is there a street light, is there a parking light that do that?
Uh, the one, in that gentleman's backyard, illuminates that area, but it's light.
For the top?
It's, it's on here, it's property, it's private property, it's not, uh, part of their, their, but, but I haven't been up there to see their light, I mean, I've done that.
Well, I know there are lights, you know, on even the hall, there, uh, so...
The dog, those are on...
The lobby area, yes.
Something I've got, what I'm checking.
Oh, oh, yes, I know.
There's a, to the, to the, to the, to the channel, we get some of the restored money, from the, the money we, like, we've got, uh, we've been waiting on several years, there's a possibility we can install the lights with that money being, it's on the water front, that's where you got to use all of the restored money, is on the water front, and there's a possibility we could light, stuff what needs to be lit up, that thing that, and, and, with that money for the initial fund, and then all we'd be, uh, we'd be helping for their own, be, the bill this month, for the, for the, for the fifth. So, I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to just, I'm looking, say, no light, I want to work for getting the lights, but I want to do it the most economical way, and, and do it right, and we do it, um, I mean, there's, there's a chance we could have some money coming, to do that, you know, that money.
I, I saw three hands, Mr. Williams, you first, and then you'll be next, and then you'll be next, and you'll come up here and...
Excuse me, second, yes, just, just comment, I did, uh, I might call it comment, but my fault is, same attitude, and keep safe, college, and whatever, uh, it may, well, that area is just getting, uh, maybe somehow a regular company, you know, it may, we owe it to, to, to be careful, the light up there, around, easily, and same happens, I mean, it's, those people, they're on conditions of down roads, I mean, it's, uh, they have a lot of, so, I do find, same attitude, and keep safe, and this area, of course, of the, of the, I like it, add a condition, I like it, add a, add a, and add a, that's really how I play, we need light, and I like that, too.
How would you feel if we did the boat ramp and Hockley Park, and there, from the, if the, 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 you know, talking about, they're coming in here, they're trying to take care of the beach, and the, but, but the beach is, and in the meantime, if, uh, someone wanted to pay eleven dollars and one cent a month, that's, what kind of, what are you doing on that?
I might get it, uh, um, change, change, uh, but, uh, there's, uh, uh, where, uh, just, uh, they, they, first of all, we got, uh, yeah, we're kind of, it may be a man, it may be a lucky friend, you know, there's, uh, problems, uh, uh, you know, we've got to be careful of that, uh, a lot of those, uh, and, uh, we do, we do, like, uh, I don't need to, uh, it's, uh, same, I, it's a very, very big deal, I mean, but, like, yeah, I know, I know, I'm, 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 thank you.
Sir, if you'll come forward?
Please, we're right, no, it won't, four to three. Now, question, do we still charge fees for the boat ramps, you, and what can we use of that money? It's like, boat ramps, you need lighting, that's a safety issue, and out of the way of discussion, is that money, on the boat ramp, you pay for?
Well, let me ask you a question, uh, and I'll ask you a question first, what did we receive last year in boat ramp fees?
Forty thousand.
About?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, and what did we use that forty thousand for?
No, we used, uh, we, we pay, uh, not boat ramps, we pay, uh, uh, and, uh, we share things, work things, maybe, uh...
And so, at the end of this day, do we still have to contribute as much to keep the boat ramp secure, and, uh, pay for the maintenance, and everything else, or is it really breaking?
Right, that, actually, I think we're up a little bit, uh, maybe up seventy thousand or twenty thousand.
Okay, so, we may have a little bit, that, as you can see, already, the boat ramp is providing security, that's where most of that money goes to, you know?
Well, I, sure, you talked about it, that's, uh...
We have, then, you hear, so, we call, during the stall season, and you've got folks backed up in the, uh, in the canal, and backed up down the road, and people are hot, and they're wanting to sit in, and, and flooding in front of people, and they're doing this and that, and the other, it came to a point, well, we had to have security down there, outdoors, I have some willings, uh...
That's all we do, scouting.
Yes, we provide the security during the stall season.
All right, and you talked about, right, you, you don't use one, just keep there, stay on, stay on, uh, how, forty thousand, uh, you, I don't think you're telling, call you too much, I work down here, I'm tired, I'm, I'm just saying, you said, men are paid a thing, they pay, they save the things you like, you know, you gotta, uh, if you're not operating, you're not, you need to operate, because you can't operate, and, and, uh, I'm, 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 not, not, people lighting, up down the street, that's, uh, if you don't like, go lighting, we, they need money, and money should be, for their, their...
Thank you, Andrew, thank you. You don't seem, would like to amount of price, can you come back?
I just want to compare something, I, um, I only put it at six hundred dollars, the labor, and the light, uh, my breath, and, and a lot of the, uh, ten, ten months, uh...
The cost, uh, for the LED light, um, to be true, I had it, two dollars, ten hundred dollars each, the LED light and the holes, um, for the park and the boat ramp are two seventy, and then one of the, uh, plus the brackets, uh, that's a thousand, four...
You, you got an office?
Four, yeah.
Four, you got three, and brackets? The mother, nine, four brackets, and, uh, four, uh, four, uh...
So, that, you're talking about several, uh, only four lights, not, not the same, uh, be, four, I don't know, okay, so that would be four, like, four hundred, so, the, I don't know, okay, and so you will, fifty, fifty two, uh...
Uh, these, one, uh, Hockley Park, three, and the boat ramp, that's what we're discussing now, the original concept was ten on the road, towards Hockley Park, and then, the quote we got, were five at the park, Hockley Park, and four at the boat ramp, I think, three, 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 that's, we reach on, Hockley Park, Hockley Park, that's up, uh, we, 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 like, the bathroom, all the bathrooms, do, do, have, uh, have, uh, closed, closed, gate, all the hockey, closed, and Hockley Park, uh, park bathroom, closed, two thousand, yeah, there are, yeah, they would be on the line, very much, and that's closed, uh, we use for residents, uh...
I, I, I...
It's probably be just, uh, uh, negative, because that, uh, I'm going to, um, so, it's a platform, that, you know, sir, can you come forward, Inspector Megan, address?
This is a gentleman, originally, I was in the, uh, I live on Court and Gray, I come in all the tail end of July, sit where you, uh, the beach, uh, Tri-City, I understand coverage, same attitude, and keep beach, all of it, Tri-City covers that, uh, if you want a light, buy a light, means I'm a year's contract, and you're worth it all, light up, down, keep the beach, I don't feel business, don't you, be trusted, all the time.
Sir, is there a question for, is there a question for, please, please, for...
Okay, well, I talked aloud when they did, 'cause I, I can't hear about it.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, what would I, uh, I, 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 oh, deep, deep, I don't feel, if it's up down the street, keep beach, they'll count, uh, uh, cloud, uh, my light, keep beach out, they don't want, like, you know, come out all the time, so, it, put it up, don't go, uh, but I'm saying, same attitude, now, I do, I feel for the boat ramp, to assert the freedom, people need to get out the door before golf, and load food, so, with the conditions that we're challenging, it's, uh, like, now, with the financial conditions, making burgers, and raising our, citizens raising our taxes, to supply the burgers, I don't think we need, there's, no lighting at this time, and any peace, except, maybe, I, I brown the boat ramp, I bought free on the boat ramp, and up, down, the beach, no, I recommend we don't do that. Thank you very much. None of that, John, this is a tough experience, and Florida's not prior, six, eight, nine, or, uh, tonight, and we heard from everybody here, I think, some all of a sudden, we've been very different, and, and everybody's sick, so, I'll be lucky enough to ask you to let go of all of the lights, and, we can either discuss this further, or we'll work outside, while we can put it on another, and then, and take the file action, now, I said all that, and I'm going to burn out through, uh, whatever, too, I go, go talk more about lights tonight.
Yeah, pretty good idea, uh, uh, what's it, uh...
Well, the only thing is, 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 I've got one lady that, she's got hands on a ham, it, it, what you said, one...
One more, that's, uh, that's, uh...
Three, and you know, it won't take that long, uh, one, one, four, five, three, I'm not bad for lights, I'll be down there, I want to know where the sea turtles nest, somebody, I've got that, sea turtles nest, and down there, where in the world would they nest? Somebody tell me, don't they wrong it up?
I've seen one, always far, on that front side, I do.
I mean, that's all I wanted to know, because he got up on the guideline, that's actually where they, they lay out, it's a drive line, you have to go out there, and, and...
They lay off, playing.
Saying, I know that, but I mean, come back, you, 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 because, uh, I just want to know, because I don't take it through at night, that's why I don't, you know, you have to come down, and, uh, check it out, and then come back at the next meeting, and let, no, I think there's a statement for that? I know that, but, I mean, I, you know, I just want to know, it's wrong, uh, and I'm going...
We're really, we're, uh, public hearing, uh, we've already discussed on enough people, uh, it's, we know, uh, continuing this, this, uh, public hearing, we're not going to vote against it, and, um, this will be, that's okay, if you permit us?
Well, we can't vote, uh, I'm prepared to vote, this, the boat ramp, and, uh, same attitude, it's, uh, can't vote, it's a tough period, you can't take the money, but what can't vote?
No, if you want to make a vote, you can, you can do that.
I'm not, getting down, can, uh...
Right, all right.
I'll be a committee, great life.
Um...
Committee is really, uh, what we've done by.
Okay.
It's not, uh, so... What, one thing I would, as my duty would be, there was, there was a misunderstanding about where this money comes from, it's a dead tax money, I don't want anybody in here being, not in Lookdale, but in the state of county, so, uh, the money is from people that stay in Lookdale, or in, uh, an RV, or something like that, or left in the system, so, the money is not coming out of our tax dollars, and left in the, in the, and that's where portion of that money comes from. So, to be clear on that, uh, that's the reason, two reasons that we went with insurance that many years, uh, as stated at Peter, at, at, uh, Churchill's season, that there's a, a big, big flock of, of people down there, uh, just being happy along, I noticed that they last year, three million dollars, if you count, uh, so, uh, it is not raising your taxes, it's not, uh, it's, uh, dead tax, and for, lots of people to come through, sometimes, successful, same happy, successful, uh, stay in Lookdale, uh, uh, I just need to be clear about that, uh, okay, I will.
I understand, I'm, 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 I'm,
... or part of that.
Thirty something thousand, I thought about.
The reason, the reason they're adjusting is because we wrote this new application to the state, to save the team up. Uh, we called it one hundred fifty K Ws would be, uh, sufficient. And that's the book that we got and we wrote for all the hundred fifty. But by the time we, uh, like we reached the contract with the state, it found out that it'd be better if we got two hundred K Ws. And even though it's the same amount, state made emergency management change. It's from one fifty to a two hundred K Ws. So it's, it's a paperwork issue that is, I mean, that's, that's the reason that back here today.
It's been four months to do that. It's so additional, I mean, it's, it's always.
That's, that's really not good for Capitol Hall, okay, we have major emergencies, you know, hurricane, all those kinds of things. You'll be able to let people stay in there during an emergency situation.
Yeah, sit around with the hot work here without the air.
Right, right, and everybody works.
Part of Capitol Hall, that's approved. Governor?
Yeah. Now, her, how big's the office?
Upper County. West County and Polley State do it there.
That's what, yeah.
What's wrong with that? Here. Well, when we had the, uh, first, uh, we had no electricity, uh, we had no electricity, didn't work at all. We could have laid out a conversation with anybody, so we had to be, uh, fortunately, the power, you know, would only out for, you know, one day, that, uh, some areas, that would be another example. Doesn't have to be hurricane, it can be something, you know.
It was also very encouraging, um, starting spring to give us use spaces to be considered as well, and, you know, that whole reason, it was a very. How long will this project take to be completed? We have, I feel, in two thousand nine, but what's that P O of this? Four years. It should be three months?
Mm-hmm.
Not in there? I mean, will be, is it supposed to, is it not yet? Yes, well, for the state. You're gonna buy, you're gonna buy the request.
Okay.
For this year? For the P S. Yeah, so if we have a down by the, by the, the thirty years. I'm not sure that we all, it may be, must get the test, go back to state, we don't come in for that, probably not.
Oh, well, my.
Is this like another grant that, um, that's not, and we don't, um, take it or come back or whatever, then you kind of take off the list? If we, the text of getting another grant or whatever, does that function in this case? Or this one will make, uh, uh, no? No, I think it all likes to be out.
No, this is, you know, this is the same P O I just wanted to make sure.
For me, yeah.
For me.
Now, let me ask a question, I think I know that. We have sponsored a hundred forty something thousand, so all has to come out of this fund we have set aside for, uh, Capitol. He, and if, if someone does post, you know, everything right, we'll get all the money back, except third time.
Yes, I'd be calling for somebody to try and, like, yeah, but we can't.
Well, anytime you can, you have hundred twenty thousand dollars, or thirty thousand, thirty percent. Right.
Okay, that's more.
I'm about to, I'm about to, you can get that kind of money for forty thousand, so, so kind of right on that, it's, it's, uh, that's when you start.
Can we take the motion for that?
Uh, my commotion, I'll send the commission moving them.
Okay, we have, um, a motion and a second, anybody to discuss it? If not, all of them say the same, aye?
Aye.
All of those say aye, sign, motion carries. Thank you. On number twenty, the board can consider a one inch and approve exceeding the cost limit on the freedom of ownership of two homes and the demolition and construction of five homes as part of step four in the local housing assistance plan as a business of grant director. If I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, on the, okay? Um, with, with ship, with demolition and reconstruction, we have three. Got three? That the limit is seventy five and they exceeded it, which would indicate those three, the total that is exceeded is eighteen thousand and ninety three dollars. So, you know? It would be about that.
Pretty much.
And then with the ship, with the one hundred ships, the reasonable location takes twenty five. Now, is it currently that whole twenty five? Yes, that's twenty five in our standard, but we did not go over on that. That's me. All this, all this came and settled, uh, within the Congress, it's very hard to fight the bond agency. Um, after the hurricane last year, the contractors are charging a lot more. We, um, if the board agrees, we can go seventy five thousand dollars limit, um, it will not be passed. The board, for the funding, because they're a hundred percent.
Right, yeah. You know, Sarah, I'm about to say it, I'm not related, we need to. You've already said that before.
Have we, we break that statement again?
I'm not related to you either.
Yeah?
I want to go ahead and, uh, such, in case it proves, uh, these ships, rehab, and ships, demolition, and stuff, but, yeah.
And I'm looking at my, hold on.
On the T H.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion back to the county, second motion to the city, any further discussion? If not, all of them say aye?
Aye.
All of those say aye, sign, motion carries. May I just?
Now, if they get, get, get in relation, I'll make the motion through, so, so, uh, we three of them, once we have two, two.
And it does not have the cost consideration, but ship has the worst.
We can do all that.
Okay, okay. Okay, we have a motion by the commissioner, thank you, second, right, commissioner, gradually, any further discussion? If not, all of them say aye?
Aye.
All of those say aye, sign, motion carries. And if, thank you, and again, so the public, each project, or has the grant, so no, no, no. When the general decision is on twenty one, the board can consider the next amendment of the D S committee for the absence of statements at the old hospital as presented by Danny Ryan, building a building.
The D S committee for the old hospital, that's the statement, considering myself, and Southern Hill, and Ryan, and now, July thirty first, that they can took the D S goal, for the D S that were seen by the board on July seventeen, now D S procedure or follow time through law. Anyway, the D S committee found that this package was worth sleep, and noted that a limited insurance document and public N C crime statement would be needed prior to execution of the contract. The D S committee found that most did of five hundred seventy two thousand, two hundred forty eight from the fire bill holding group, E A C L L C successful, and would recommend according to D S, his money for making the purchase. His, he was, he was the first.
Now, the updated insurance documents and public N C crime statements needed for more execution of the contract was.
Documents that weren't, won't proceed, we're not sure we can come up with. I, I love this, it's a good thing, we said, five hundred seventy two thousand dollars, who has the, let's, it's a lot. I mean, where's the budget from?
Nobody.
There ain't no, uh, you know, sort of, that, hey, you should ever be ready, and you, so, I mean, I think this was a good extra time to go up. We can disarm that, and find some words, click on, I think something hundred fifty thousand, something like that, because working so hard, it's just, just fine, I don't think so.
Now, but you still have a deliberated, good, that's, that's.
I all that emotion, that we don't do, you know, and we're, our attention is five hundred, ten, ten thousand.
I love that emotion, and I like the thing, I want us to get rid of that hill, and I want to see what's up there, and I want us to put it up a bit, and get it going.
We did, we talked about that, they, you know, you understand that, all of them say the same, aye? All of those times, sign.
I all the second, the mission, we're moving, that's, we're just building up before, that's like, that's the life of our, aye?
If, we, we all believe.
Well, yeah.
Okay, that's, that was the task, yeah.
Well, we have, got to be, want to, this, this, that, 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 you know, this. That'd be probably, that's what you think?
Is it something we have to do, uh, we have to put it up a bit, before we mix up? That's what I thought, we have somebody in, and, and so, already dealt with.
Okay, I have a couple questions. So, in order to, so that we, we don't have to, uh, do the evaluation? Right, and then, do we have any liability concerns? If someone comes in, does anything that happens out of that, would it come, okay, so, okay.
Well, what we will do is, we sell it, we provide those to the state, uh, well, we harm it, and, and here, that, that, we remember, that's what he, the person said, he came with the idea that we had he represented, he, 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 he offered, he offered us that. Well, that's part of, part of, uh, the, um, if you're gonna sell it, they're gonna have to, you know, that.
Sometimes death starts with some public expenses.
Oh, I understand, it's a question, I, I think it's very, with it?
Yes, thank you, uh, but we did that, so I'd like to be very fond, um, on a town lot, there's one more guy, that they give up a farm, a town lot, and some property to do, and, uh, something on that door. Um, I wouldn't know all about that, but I think it's a good idea to try and get to the, we certainly cannot afford too many things to do.
Sixteen years, then, let's, they're going down here, and we need to, uh, we talk, we talk for pretty much dead, we trying to do.
Right. Is that, is that the land?
Hold on, Sarah, Sarah, hold on, please, please.
I'm not a teenager, just, we need to, I'm, I'm answering a question, somebody else is being the same way, I am. We determine what property we're going to add time, we would switch it to other companies, or, 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 is that what we need to turn that off those time?
We need to, the old building and the older building, that, we ain't gonna let that over at the firehouse building? And then, we need to get a line, go, and then, like, we could say, we need to lay it out, like, this is the first foot of what, what goes with that contract.
Now, I've had a call, uh, someone, that, um, she was in charge of my father's store, and, uh, she was very concerned of what was happening with that. You're not gonna include, Jeff, is that?
No, that, that was the end, but, if you remember, Mr. Currie said, or, maybe said to somebody, they already talked, mentioned to her, and they said, the gentleman that mentioned him by, said, you can have that, along the, and he got his old car, he ready to, to go online. You know, because he grew up, like, he was trying to let her have that total free, just, you know, you know.
Right, I'd like the limit to be able to have that.
Right, I, I, I'm all for it. And, and that's brought up in the conversation, just that, that hill, he can be, left there, and, and, he said he ready to, his car, he threw it online, his car, you know.
That'd be a little tough, 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 uh, well, we, we advertise, we got to advertise these back, which is, which is advertising now. Like I said, they, they survey, because the property, uh, is they could build, in other words, so they got these now, of what we, that property, we, you know, they'll do. So, that was others, I, I.
So, probably we need to, now, I can approve, or maybe we don't?
I think we should, uh, you know, I mean, like I said, I think might be great, that.
Yes.
I think some of my two parties, which is the health party, some part of it, we don't, we don't, I don't know that part of it, uh, that, so, fathers, you talk fathers, fathers? I think it may be part of that, part of what helps the party, so, I might come back in a couple weeks, or, so, these, or, very fine, like, well, we, well, survey or, or.
Uh, so that, uh, we wouldn't have that twenty-five mile long school area. So that's my, uh, that's, um, following training, training for the board. So that's the week it's, you know, put it on. Future agenda, work, uh, my workshop, uh, of period, still handle.
I'm ready to do this tonight, all these thoughts.
Oh. Your motion to be, what, yeah, I think, I think, he's, he's got support, that's got, part support. I'm a dog, part support. Yeah, that's what, uh, 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 to, to end that and, uh, for them to, to work, to talk or whatever, uh, but, okay. Uh, if, if you, if they do that, you tell me what you want, uh, 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 any order.
Okay, okay.
Any order, so, I mean, uh. Okay. Okay, okay, got you. Uh, okay.
Uh, I, 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 I would like to be, where is the, where is the, where is the, where is the channel now, because, um, is that, some of the, we do?
We do, our, uh, we think about resolution, gentlemen.
Okay, well, then we gotta, kind of, see, where do you go from twenty-five, forty-five, fifty-five, twenty-five, how?
I, well, maybe so, but, uh, you know, whenever you get, when you get seen as you, sometimes there's, reduce speed ahead, twenty-five mile, uh, going through a long, Allison yard, process, found the speed process, change the speed limit. I don't know that that's, 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 uh, by statute, but that's, uh, in our terms, you know, the road policy. I don't, I don't know why we do that, it's not that way anywhere, so, that's everybody.
Well, who's the side, who likes the side?
Well, I, I sure don't care. I sure don't care.
So we have a motion?
I'm, I, I'd like to say, just, uh, anybody in the public won't come up and speak on that?
They can stand up with their girl, that's, you know, that's.
My girl, she's, that's one of the, you, you certain?
Yeah, yeah. And we're, we're not passing anything to us. What we're demanding is just to, for, uh, attorneys to end the tort.
I've had a lot of calls about speeding there, from kids and roads, on, uh, people want that speeding change, you know?
Yes.
I have a lot of calls, uh, I have a lot of calls about it, all of you, I did, people called, you know, especially people that work down there, I, I let's bet you call me today, my triple trip to stay down in the air, you know, telling me my triple trip, saying he's been called right there, on that road, so, that speeding, but I did, I'm like, as Ray said, we need to have a warning sign, speeding, fix the change, and then add the speeding, you know, and, and, uh.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion, is there a fact?
I'll say, most.
So motion by Mr. Bradley, second by Mr. Page, all the others they are?
Uh-huh.
All the folks on side, motion here. So, we're, um, county attorney?
I'm not.
Okay, and, uh, county administrator, uh, on the former county administrator, uh, makes it all out of.
I need to ask you, uh, is there a, um, step, a few more, uh, but?
Well, I think he does, yeah, there is.
Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll be still moving through. Just, can you take a ride?
Yeah, I think it's necessary, because we still have some unexperienced, uh, conservative folks.
Okay, there's, uh, I'm gonna schedule that, uh. What we go do, is that's, here.
Yeah, we, if we didn't, um, drag that, uh, looking at, uh, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, uh, I'll be with everybody, uh, uh, so, the issue is that, he's, uh, raised, uh, feeling, I asked him, he didn't know, uh, when, like, we were at, at that time.
But, and, uh, where you said, I intended to admit it, Chris.
Yeah.
And I have to, uh, and there's two public hearings on visiting, uh.
Well, we request that you saw, and see, what's gonna do without, and we can do, because your first public hearing's on Monday, we have to have a, and use a paper on Thursday, that has to be, and not surprise, like, a surprise paper, to set something for, yet no, yet, at that law, we'll take that into consideration, we'll check the fact, that gives us a week, a notice, so we can use the new, uh, in the paper. So I'll give you, uh, mine, because we need, um, we need, former vice, the vice president.
Okay, make that, uh, uh, it's another day, I know we don't talk about very much with the rail, we're still ongoing, uh, federal rail people, we're talking with the railroads, I'll be tracked, uh, they're going over, uh, I don't know, so, we'll be, with a project, um, we have another conference call Thursday, but an interesting call, we have, thank, DOT call, three, uh, uh, they wanna help us, and they wanted to, that was like a, pretty far partnership, but that was, a lot, he's pretty quick about, you know, federal rail people, we were told, this grant is with Pedro County, all the funds you're gonna have to go to Pedro County, uh, I do want to say, you know, he's still willing to help us, we're gonna work with him, but, her, we're gonna be involved with, we're gonna be, uh, doing work. We also got, uh, this, this area, uh, um, three, uh, that, another one of those ones who's, um, you know, we did, we, I started on, I, I, I take three, I, I'm gonna get through it, okay, because it's very, very, um, and, and, it is, um, the same, uh, so, you know, uh, telling me, and everybody, we, uh, very careful, with the, uh, um, I said, that'll, uh, you know, and I was told they don't want me to change. They're not allowed to change, you know, we know that, we know what we're doing, and I, and what we're excited, but, uh, what, what, uh, uh, right, and, and, uh, sure, so we're making sure, uh, 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 yeah. Also, the revolution passed by the city, uh, the board of the, uh, reverend's coming up, uh, I share my field, I like to read it, uh, instead of the road, the city council of the city period, foreign, urban, all voters, vote yes, on the office twenty-eight, reverend vows to allow federal county commissions ability to offer taxes, they, you are expanding businesses that will encourage job creation for the community, whereas, council, the city period, the commission, government, with investment creates jobs, that's, that's working to hand, whereas the competition to bring new jobs, investment, for the community, strongly competitive nationwide, and, whereas both companies seek relocation, seeking investment, or location, whereas property tax, as the group of collaborators said, economic development, and, whereas every ten years, the community must review operations when the county commission be able to alter, whereas the city council, by, that we continue to operate, being extended, essential to future, in our health, the community, now therefore, we resolve a city council, city period, as follows, the city council, or all voters, vote yes, on the office, we have vows, reverend, to allow the county commission ability to offer taxes, and, and, on a case, by getting, uh, I should know, should I have a similar revolution, come up, uh, your management, uh, was thinking next to, we wanna get in the industry, and so, you know, you can like to get some, 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 I know, uh, my friend of mine, has, uh, he moved to Georgia, and he said, the power bill, and the tax, and, along, they didn't move, if it was Georgia, and I always, uh, my thought is, is Florida missed that, and, uh, people, so, you know, get that, and, uh, the, the tax, and, 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 uh, you know, so. I'm not fit to do that, okay, I have one.
I, I, I want to the public to know exactly, you know, what this means, and I think that there's some of that, that we need, that's learning, that we need to do, uh, and I, and I call the people, uh, and they think, you know, it's more amusing, this coming to town, they're bored, uh, so we need to look at the learnings there, uh, you know, somebody, somebody's gonna pay those tax, so, I, I okay with these businesses coming to town, you know, uh, so we just need to be, be very careful.
Great, okay.
Very careful.
For, for, uh, 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 uh.
Okay, item number twenty-five, comments and concerns from the public, non-addenda items, if you're, and you wish to speak out, finding that is not the agenda, you can come forward, you can speak for three minutes, send your name and address, if it's something that needs to be voted on, you don't vote on that at night, but it can be sent on a picture, send the yes, man.
My name is Jim Paul, I live in one-one-four-five-three. I had something happen to me the other day, and I was gonna ask a question, that was really, and I'll try and make it as brief as possible, okay, um, I was in the woods, taking pictures, uh, looking to the house, I was being, rotating, feet, shot. I was parked, I was parked way down, further to the mis-stable side, because there were people parked in the slots, and I was back way wrong, that was still late, and I think they went in the north entrance of the courthouse, so, can y'all please tell me what's the policy for going in that north entrance of courthouse?
Oh.
And why are people parking in front of the new businesses, that's even open, on that side of the street? We got feet in that up block, open, it's closed, and I'm speaking for me myself, and I, because it gets me off to know where to have to walk, because somebody was racing, and the courthouse parking lot was padded.
Okay, so the north entrance is on the side, the side, is that side interested?
I, it is, where that cafe, you know, I'm talking about, so that's, I thought, we used it by law enforcement? I think they knew it was law enforcement, and that's why I did start asking, what's the policy?
Can you answer the question, so I can, well, I might be able to, let's do it, uh?
Just wait.
Yeah, say, I'm blocking law, yeah, we have been, uh, for large amounts of hours, uh, one day, we, I think, uh, two hundred and fifty-five, uh, probably a hundred and sixty of those security guards, those cadres, uh, being courted, and we got lost in trials, we got, um, the trial, coming up, that's going to be, like, uh, parking, uh, but I'm...
What court?
Well, we have a week that's, during trials, every month, yeah. If you tell me what that is, I can look at.
Well, this past week, uh, it was the courthouse, and the courthouse parking lot was padded, and it's, you know, this way, like, they just need more vault, and they got, you know, with the north entrance, I'm sorry, whatever, it was, well, that's exactly what I thought, and that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm up here, you know, and what I'd like to see, you know, and, and because they want people to shop downtown, and do business downtown, you got businesses on that side, put back the handicapped lot, it's considered, open, and reserve those lots, for those businesses, and their customers, don't tell me I got those things.
Do we have any, anybody, that, uh, don't understand, or anybody that can do, come up there now, and see what's going on, or, uh, let me do this, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm, well, they said, I'll finish, probably, you know, we're, well, I, I, so, I, I, man, I told my entire, my, my friends, and this, and that, so.
And they were tired, wasn't it?
Well, they not gone yet, and I, 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 before we take the big job, and y'all, y'all got, had enough, but if y'all play this, this, and y'all do something, and talk to them, and y'all want me to ask?
That's, that's true. Say to me that the issue that was addressed, uh, uh, whether or not, people are going in that north side, and that's, uh, that's, that's easy enough to, you know, maybe catch on, uh, uh.
I, I don't say all, but they don't say all.
Right.
Well, the thing about, maybe, the only people that should have access there would be, the sheriff's department, when they raise, first of them, that are gonna be in court that day, uh.
That's my, really, my, my, their car, uh.
Well, they, we, they try, like, each, if you do, they just, that man's try, oh, because they just see, uh, and it's technical thing, and they don't realize. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't buy that, I don't buy that call, you know?
Well, all, you know, I mean, you can't about nothing, we, no, 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 no.
I put it on y'all, to tell all these departments, is in that courthouse, there will be no go in that go entrance, unless you're in the, here, so.
Is this something that we wanna work out, and, uh, the staff, and try to get some data?
Trying to work, uh, 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 uh.
And on the, on the, stand, uh, uh, that he's trying to do, man?
Well, I'll be headed up here, you know, you know, you know, I'll be ready.
That works out, Thursday, we do.
So let's, see what kind of data we can get, and see if we can, intercept the action, uh, this is a thing, and everybody else, and, and, everybody else, go through, everybody else goes through.
Okay, very good, that's all I'll say, uh.
All right, thank you, yes, sir.
Uh, well, uh, you go, uh, and use the workshop for the night, is that right?
No, we don't have this, the regular board meeting.
Oh, board meeting, well, I bet, uh, I like for the board to go back and consider what the workshop was, should do it, last meeting, about raising our taxes, and our methods, uh, and I didn't hear a word from the city of what they're supporting, the county, and I think that the board needs to put some pressure on the city to give, uh, give you some money to have finance, to count, I, uh, was in for, at the county, uh, city manager meeting, and I asked for a red light in Center Street, and, uh, he told me, run off the path, they didn't have money, and that's what the county promised, that's the first, and I thought he said, he says, ain't no way, but, uh, the taxes, gasoline taxes, the, uh, the taxes, some of that, things that need to be eliminated, and slow down on by, uh, and let's get this, you know, it back and roll, to pay that, and do things, instead of just keep by, and add to the charge, and, uh, of course, I think the red lights is very important for safety, on both of, of these taxes, that's, uh, hand, with us, and raising the medicine, y'all know, there's probably fifty percent of people, rent, or essential taxes, and, uh, taxpayers, and pick them up, sell them, and, and, I, I'm free on that, on that, and, uh, I'd like, y'all, when you have another workshop, you back down on some of that stuff, and I'll read it in the paper, and just, like, level down, so it's not, this, you know, be in, by, after shape, that it looks like, and that, all I meant to do is consider, we, we do a, telling the management, so, uh, properly detect, and above all, still consider the two red lights, for the whole, you know, and it, and that's a, sticking to, to give some finance, money on that, just about, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, what, yes, sir.
And we're twenty-nine-one, we're, uh, he actually, once, when he updated on, your part, your part, Stephen's place, uh, and he knows, a couple months ago, there was, uh, a wet condition, nature, and, I contacted, uh, water management, this, uh, over that , for, uh, county, and I made contact on, in places, with, uh, Mr. Frager, with, uh, Chief McNeer, of the district, based, they on a daily basis, I checked the condition of the new spring here, in Spring Run, which I'm sure some of you have gotten, called on, and the water quality is very cool, for people, uh, currently, the water quality is good, not a thing, thing that I've been told to look for, our water, if it happens, uh, the temperature of the water is cool, still cold, the temperature in, uh, Spring Run is cold, the temperature coming out of the six inch pipe around the wall is cold, uh, it appears, we, we have to be, spring head opened up in the brush, at one time, it was five, and all, culminate into a spring head forming, or, or applied to, to, which is very big, uh, it appears that water flow is coming out of the spring, in the spring pool, a large opening that showed up two weeks ago, in the case that all this is coming underneath the wall, that was put in when we reached, uh, that there's not any, any need, rain, coming, uh, from the, uh, from the brush, we're still checking on, daily basis, uh, we have, uh, the, the longer, Roger Ford, or, or the county, to turn out the six inch, I'm at, uh, the, the level of the pool that people play in, put back inside, daily condition of what, if anything, should be, uh, protected, the spring pool, right now, there's no apparent problem, there's no apparent reason why people should be restricted from being, uh, to level, uh, where, most people, seeing, that we've worked on it, for you, uh, if something does come up, uh, would be a problem, or, I have, uh, uh, with the county administrator, and, and, uh, the, the, Frager, that, if, 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 uh, the water, uh, uh, if it's called, there's no reason for working, uh, uh, I would, uh...
Okay, that's what, call, please, that's, that's, that's what I mean.
Okay, that means, that's, uh, I'm setting, based on that nature call, that, the foundations, the walls that were put in, and the sub-foundation that was put in, and probably been penetrated by the, spring pool, and the key, spring head, for the pool, uh, as long as the springs are growing well enough, the floor, the floor looks like it's put opening, and the pool, there's nothing that we need to do.
So it's not compromised, that, uh?
So, it's not compromised, it's overused, the only thing that has happened is that the pool level has, uh, gotten, uh, lower, and people are not used to that, and they're looking over and seeing things they never saw before, so they're concerned, uh, they're still, for five foot close of large, in the spring pool, for twenty, way in, in, that type of, uh, uh.
Even though, uh?
More than enough, um, since being used, on a daily basis, there's, uh, a lot of people are continuing to use it, and I'm over checking, uh, and that's what it is about it, I'm trying to explain it, if, uh, pressure problems are, I make sure, with, uh, rain, and the, uh, pressure, uh, about the water, saying, uh, uh...
Any questions from the board?
No.
I would thank you for, um, you're involved, uh, with, you volunteered, meaning, uh, wonderful project, that you came up.
Oh, just, uh, here, I'm sure, uh, that's, that's the one you called, uh, 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 uh.
Anybody else?
Uh.
No, I'll, we'll, uh, to item twenty-six, board informational items, uh, we just got it?
Uh, I think, uh, they appreciate all the, uh, uh, I, uh, I mean, towns would have more meetings, and a lot of people, uh, 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 everyone, and I appreciate it, uh, I will say that, uh, uh, one issue, is being had to, on, uh, second and, uh, I, where we have a great issue, uh, we have, uh, we were, uh, eight, uh, two tags, or, uh, concrete there, right, we put, uh, larger grain pipe, that, uh, obviously, uh, we had, some of the, the grain that's, uh, clean out that area, for their, uh, because hurricane, it, it, it's, uh, never, uh, also, same thing at People Beach, uh, we have a grain issue, bigger, one of the drains, uh, the stall, and the, uh, roof paint, is stocked up, uh, they try to, uh, stop it, it, so, they're gonna have to deal with it, try to figure out what is, uh, is, is, uh, there, but right there, next to, is, uh, uh, People Beach Road, the lake, and, and, uh, they have that on, uh, of course, all rain this week, it's, uh, so, so, uh, uh, I guess we, uh, uh, this, uh, flood, uh, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben, and Karen, I, uh, of course, knowledge, come by the, the, the will-be family, and they just, uh, beat my house, Saturday, I think, she's going on her next, uh, and, uh, Justin, I wanna come up, get up, uh, so, we have a question, I shared before, meeting, the man, that I had talked with, with you, and this, like, today, I have a question, you did, yes, sir, and, and you understand, that, uh, uh, I, I have on, I have, uh, this, this, fair, this week, those things, so, uh, 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 well, I don't know, uh, the people, we, you know, what the issue is, uh, uh, this, this question, and, uh, I was playing, in my, and, a neighbor, behind him, raised a music for loud, and they, they have to listen to that song, uh, 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 any issue, which, and if you're a law enforcement, issue problem, or else, I, it's, uh, we have our, uh, 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 I think full sheriff issue there, any other support, but we, uh, I hope the sheriff out today will put together a game plan further for tomorrow. Come see you, talk to her about four weeks soon. Now, I've been saying, uh, there was a call made unanswered, uh, I'm, I'm researching that, as I indicated earlier. This is a lady who's been answering, I had to research some things, required to give you an answer, I want to have answers when I come talk to you tomorrow. Give you your place up, I think, ma'am, come on up, tell us a story.
Hey, y'all, come see my little thing, y'all, if it's warm, come see my girl. We, me and my neighbor next door, she just takes me to my cousin, but this is what, uh, since July last year, we dealt with industrial fireworks, we dealt with brown music, we dealt with them traps in my yard.
Golf ball.
Uh, golf ball, so, uh, we made twenty to thirty calls to the police department. Uh, we had one gentleman, young man, Mr. James, come out to my house, and he was actually going to take this gentleman in questions to jail. Not because of his music, because this gentleman got his face and told him he wasn't going to do what he asked him to do. Your part is on duty, which we've had any problems with him, came house to the house, and he said, no, it's Willoughby's phone number, it's your neighbor's phone number, we'll get back in touch with you. Like, they'd be great if this gentleman, like, this gentleman got his face and told him what he was and wasn't going to do. It's getting old, they wait till they get to their drawing, to join to mine, and I've got a fence all the way down my line. And they roll all their windows down in their truck, and as they're here, I have been called numerous bad names. I have gotten women's kids' face, I said, I'm going to earn my stripes tonight, because I'm fixing to get out of the car and call me what you just called me on my cell phone. Y'all need to, as sheriff's department, do y'all's job and take their buck to jail, well, I helped to go to jail and earn my stripes. And I was, I'm sorry, I was talking, I was talking to you tomorrow too. But, there's no, there's no ordinance in the county, I was told there was not, I was told that they weren't off the service of peace. I was also told by the police department that their hands were tied, I was also told that a camera was built up on my property, I have cameras on my property and a security system. Um, I have, we went to Wayne three or four times, we went to his office to sit down with him, he had told us, he's going to put undercover out there, he's going to watch them, he's going to take them to jail. We have it all, we're tired, we're exhausted, we don't live like that. You know, we, you know, I, I understand you're playing, I understand, playing in the pool, like a pool, my, 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 I feel bad when I could sit in yours and play. But to get out there and I could hear your music and the words playing, and the music, and all that, and now we're being harassed, because we have what we've been supposed to, and Wayne has brought in an individual that wasn't involved in the video. And do we, do we have a, like, name for it?
Yes, we have one.
Okay, so we've got a court, and the sheriff's department, this is where all this, and now it's, we all know about it, and I feel certain that, you know, we're, uh, looking for a right.
Well, yes, um, I'm sure, because that's why I've been involved, and, and, I'm spoken, so I would ask you to give me an opportunity to come out and make people on that one, try to work on this.
I have, I have, you know, that, you know, I'm working in here, come up tomorrow, all day, um, I can leave work anytime, I'll hold it under control, and I won't stop.
Well, I told you that I'll come out and.
I'm, I've been doing anything for the life, for the life, so.
What time will you be home, please, and something?
I'll, I'll work from eight to five, but I work a mile from my house.
Well, don't leave, don't leave the life, can we use the other?
Okay.
Please, we may, we may, that's all, um, yeah.
Okay, I, I, okay, thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. This one thing, we have, they have, Lord, together, now good, a pointy down, that's a decision, that'll be the end, but the rest of it, that's a bell near, to measure the last dollar.
Uh.
So you have that, um, when, I don't do that either, whatever that, what you're saying, say.
Well, I don't drive, I don't do it.
But I would, I would, don't worry.
You have to go to law, this, this. I'm going to work on it, I'm going to say, I promise, but I'll do everything I can. I know you will, you're good man.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you, Mr. May.
All right, all right. Keep a little bit sweet tight tonight, maybe I'll be able to keep you going. That's all I am. Never mind that, that's, like, I mean, uh. I mean, he called me, Valerie. He says, county, this is a great opportunity for our residents. We've got a RV or a camper, and we take an order of a day over, spring go there, and we say, nobody has to go, we do two day trips, and we say sixteen, fifteen, nine. They got sixty faces over there, they leave. You go overnight, okay. All right, y'all, put in a place like that. Uh, well, we have to work our place, but. What about Henson Spring Park? Well, I don't know that, that's a place. The thing about looking at that is that we've got a private person right down the street, he's already got camp for them. What about all the springs? I said, we don't know if that's wrong. Oh, I hope you got the all of the springs. And he's named off several other places. He said, what about Eagle Valley? I said, we don't know Eagle Valley. So, you know, I, he gets to get, he gets coming back to that place. I guess we should call another stock, law enforcement, you know, and, and bring it board and, uh, working with them. But, uh, I, my personal feeling is is not to have all these things, but a couple of them. And it's a place, still in discussion for private enterprise, regular gentleman's law. Uh, I may be wrong. Keep burning, little, everybody, every time that they want, government change that terror everywhere. Well, that's all I am.
What do you think?
Yeah.
I was just here thinking about all these orders, what, you know, getting through the order. There's dollars for whole counts that I found out. And it is, I did have a third.
I remember they put the, uh, county employee, as they say, there all night, a couple nights, got the blockings off, he was down there. Went to the beach area, uh, on, uh, called security court, yeah, they said, suddenly you can all drive that one up the road.
No, we don't call, you know, we don't find, find orders together, together, you know, you know, give the enforcement. It's hard to have that, you know, that, that, that's all. Uh, we're, we're, I saw that.
You know, I saw, uh, checking that, that I bring the, uh, uh.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Years ago, that mud, mud logging deal with the noise of the mud logging.
Yeah, there you go.
And airboats on the waterfront. All that had a lot to do with reasons that noise orders never had been before. You know, that, that, say, Florida, of course, airboats put them up and all, and that helped a little bit. But the engine really wasn't noise that way, it was rock, made off the noise. And, uh, noise orders, uh, would have said, some, less people, you know, foreigners or someone, but. And the type of meal much of a lot of noise out in our neighborhood, you know, everybody's left that every year, the type of meal put on muggles on their land. You know, they go muggles on the, I actually did muggles for the, for the things all in, in game, in, in salt. That really helped that neighborhood, so, I mean, there's, there's nothing we can do for noise orders to do for things. And somebody just, you know, going noise, like that lady, now you're talking all that stuff. That's what caused the shooting out on the dock of different, like.
Yep.
Was that flying down, like, survey state, loud music, and all that stuff, it's called police, we're the best. And I think we really need to address as much as we can, just, you know, we don't need another dock of different. See, that's, you know, I, I went to, I went from my neighbor down on Buck Street this week, and survey state, we missed about half of the form, this evening, just another. And I just wanted to say that I go with me, and Wayne, Wayne, to all of them, I said, Wayne, go with me, we went out there, we said, just Wayne, go. Somebody was going to jail, he had come back out. I hadn't heard any more of these ones. You know, sometimes it's that Wayne, or here, to go out there, and, uh, and Wayne, to, uh, enough, enough, you know, that's how I was thinking, and that's just like.
I have a problem.
I feel like, I feel like you will, but I really did. Uh, but, yeah. I appreciate everybody coming, I appreciate your opinion on everything, and I'm glad that they're making, making, like, 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 spread it, that we're going to make a movie, you know. And, I mean, that's, that's, you know, I love to give government, express the feeling. Thanks for, for, again, should express the feeling, and, and, that's, that's, I feel about it. And my decision, you know, Buck Street, I got a lot of luck. I got four doors on Corby Grade, one's like sort of, and I think forty different places, the road, the road is covered on Corby Grade. And down in, uh, and, uh, you know, on that, but, uh, the coast is running harder than ten years down there, where it comes from. Cold, cold, running, where it's got all the water, but, uh, the coast is, well, they're cleaned out, they go, it's fully good. And, uh, yeah, the, the bridge down there, I mean, the coast has walked out some years ago down on Front Water. Uh, they're still holding, and this coast we put in, and the building we put across there is still holding, but we've got the road locked off, so people won't make a chance getting into the, you know, and, uh, you know, that's just, uh, yeah. We just need some dry days like today, a few more dry days, and then it'll get water go down, but. What made me last time on Corby Grade, down there by the straw house, and the whole place was flooded. Down the road, of course, you know, Buck Street, there wasn't a water, it took an hour to, it dried down, or about, it flooded up there on, on East End, but, you know. I guess they, they.
It's still, it's still on Corby Grade.
Oh, yeah, it works, probably, right, yeah.
Or that water coming from.
It's coming from south of you, the, the, when you go to the turn of the river there and go down through the sand hills, the IV all the way down to that side, it's all about water. Can't go to the coast that way. You got to turn around and go back downstream all the way out, which is.
Well, that'll keep, that's my, my, my house. It's good. Well, yeah, huh?
Right, right. It's just, it's, actually, we got elsewhere in the rain out there, too.
Yeah. He has a safe house, he's going to check the battery door.
Oh, he's too fast.
Uh, we have.
Happy day to you.
Okay, that's, hey, here.
Friends, uh, 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 uh.
We didn't, uh, like, I, I, we got a, uh, program, uh, uh, we, we have.